Good afternoon, everybody. Please take your seats. The first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. councillor Fox?
Yes, Chair. councillor Brian Strong, councillor Bob Cremeland and councillor Sheila Wood. Oh, sorry, yes, and...
Frances? Thank you. councillor Richard? Thank you. So councillor Watkins?
Lynda Gough, he sends her apologies.
Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda this afternoon is public open forum. I have a lady with us, I think, who wishes to address us. Mrs Jones Griffiths. Sorry, I was looking around. I've got three generations. If you'd like to approach Ross from... On the bottom of the microphone, you'll see a button. If you press that, that's the one. It's all yours.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to start just by thanking you to allow me to come and speak to you today. But I'd also like to specifically thank Dimitri. I know that, obviously, this is a very difficult issue and to take it on amongst your own party, I know, is very difficult and it requires passion, determination and, above all, courage. So I'd like to say thank you for doing that and, you know, it's a heartfelt thank from many of the parents. So the reason I'm here today, really, for me, I was thinking about how was I going to go about addressing you and I think in the short few months that Lola's been alive, it's probably best if I just give you a bit of a back history about where I'm from and what Lola's all about. So my name's Roz, I live in Caldicott, I'm mum to Lola, who is going to be four months old in January. And at three and a half weeks old, following three failed newborn hearing screening tests, we attended the Royal Gwent Hospital for a far more detailed audiogram test. After about an hour and a quarter of testing, it was revealed, actually, that it was rather devastating news and Lola was diagnosed as having a bilateral sense of neural hearing loss of a severe and significant nature. In layman's terms, that basically means that she is severely to profoundly deaf and will never hear unaided. By the time we left the hospital, we had already been referred to the paediatric doctor, we had been referred to the audiology department for hearing aids, which she had had molds taken of her ears, ready for the inserts that would be the main part of the hearing aid, and we were also referred to SenCom, which is obviously what we're here to discuss today. We were diagnosed on the Thursday and by the Monday evening, Jo Plant, who is head of service at SenCom, did a home visit. She came at six o'clock in the evening so that my husband was able to attend the meeting as well and laid out the support structure that was in place for Lola and that would support her for the next 25 years of her life. I think at the time I was probably naive to the fact that actually the support was incredible. I think I was probably still reeling from the diagnosis and rather numb about all of it. But in hindsight, what we've experienced in the short space of time is something that I feel has been totally fantastic. So as far as the service goes, we attend a weekly hearing impairment playgroup, which is at Brecon House, which is their main location. On our first visit there, we met with Jo again, we were shown round the entire resource centre, which frankly was mind blowing. I work in education myself, I know how funding can be massively pushed and we, you know, I work in the technology department, which is very creative. We had a special kitchen fitted for a student who had dwarfism and the amount of arguments and fights that we had to get and go through to get that resource was huge. So to see it all in place already in Brecon House was amazing and I felt very confident that Lola was going to have everything that she needed. In that playgroup, we spend a good hour interacting with the teachers of the deaf and the HLTA's, which is the Higher Level Teaching Assistance, and they support Lola and the other children there in order to help them develop in their early years development. As well as that, it's an advice service. So Lola has been born into a world where she is deaf with a little d. She's born into a hearing family. If she was born into a deaf family, we'd be deaf with a capital D, but she's not and we're not. We know very little about it. So for me, SenCom has been hugely beneficial in fact finding, rather than having to resort to trying to Googling 100 different topics and getting a variety of answers. Lola also has a dedicated teacher of the deaf, a lady named Claire, who does a fortnightly visit to the house. That service will continue throughout nursery and throughout school, we hope. Again, in that hour, we had a visit yesterday and Claire interacted with Lola for an hour with very sensory focused activities that are specialist to Lola's needs. I think with all of this support that we've seen, the biggest concern that I have is ultimately, any child in Newport's going to be far greater affected, I feel, than Lola is, but it is having a knock on. I already know that Lola's teacher of the deaf will not be Lola's teacher of the deaf from April next year. She is being sent to Newport as part of the SenCom restructure, but she also knows that she's going to Newport and has to fight for a job with another person. The job isn't the same job that she does now and she's been told that it won't be as hands on. She's also had to say to me, "Well, I don't even know whether I'm going to carry on doing the job I do because why would I? I went into it to work with children and to be hands on and an advice only service is not what I want to offer." Obviously, with the redundancies, I would question whether there will be the opportunity for the hearing impairment playgroup on a Tuesday. There are six posts that are being potentially made redundant and they have to reapply then for two to three roles. If there are only two to three roles but the number of children haven't changed, how is that then going to affect the activities that they run on a weekly basis? I'm pretty sure they'll still have the level of paperwork that they have to fill out and unfortunately, that will probably take precedent over the actual activities. I would urge you today to back Dimitri all the way because this is something that has to be fought and it is so important. And with that in mind, this is something that I was, I came across on the SenCom restructure group that has been formed on Facebook with a lot of other parents and it's actually from UNICEF, but it's the United Nations Rights of Children. The first one is about goals of education, Article 29, and it says in the first sentence alone, "Education must develop every child's personality, talents and abilities to the full." I think this one probably sums it up even better because it's to do with children with a disability. Article 23 outlines that a child with a disability has the right to live a full and decent life with dignity and, as far as possible, independence and to play an active part in the community. Governments must do all they can to support disabled children and their families. I think reading that last sentence alone in relation to Newport's proposal, if I were to question Newport's proposal, I know exactly what my answer would be to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to change the order of the agenda now. I'm not going to take item three, I'm going to go straight on to four so that we can link your, Dimitri's motion with your address that you've just made. So Dimitri, on to you now. On to item four, one.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair. First, can I just thank Roz and Lola for coming and Roz said it better than any politician could ever say and give us a real sense of what this regional, regional service does for kids across Gwent. I also visited the centre a couple of days ago, saw the facilities. I actually, just by coincidence, saw a visually impaired toddler group with one-to-one care and assistance. I think it was about five babies in there and it was just wonderful to see it. There's moments when you're a councillor, I know many councillors here, you think, "Why did I ever get involved being an elected member?" We've all had those little moments. I have them more recently. But then when you see what we do and our commitment to that service and those, commitment to those kids, I urge you to go and see it for yourself. It's, I came out quite emotional, I'll be honest, from seeing it. And what my concern is about this motion is make sure, after speaking to the staff, that the regional service, as it continues, is resilient for Monmashire's children. We have 43 visually impaired children, 193 hearing impaired children, and we must ensure this council, these councillors, that we stay firmly and unitedly that we're right behind the staff, we are right behind the service. And to give you an idea, I was speaking to the manager there and he was telling me, and I think Ross mentioned, mentioned it, the consistency of service to the child, where they build up that relationship, such as the bond between the worker and the child, that even out of hours, because a lot of these children are very sick, they have multiple stuff going on, it's not just usually hearing and, hearing and visual, there's other things. They're really quite sick children and often they sadly pass away in a year, but they go to the hospices out of hours to watch and be with them, with their parents, and I just, that got to me. So I just wanted a simple motion, I don't want to say any more than that, that we just stand behind them.
Thank you very much, Dimitri. Is that seconded? Yeah, thank you, Martin. councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. First of all, can I thank Dimitri for bringing the motion and I know how difficult it is when sometimes you have to stand firm against something you really don't believe in and even when that is aligned to your own political party, I think that takes great courage and so I thank you for bringing the motion and to Rosman for coming in today and so particularly helping us understand the strength and power of this service. A service which we've been aligned to for probably, well, since Monmashire County Council existed, but prior to that, I know we have members here who, who would have been part of those early days in Gwent when the Gwent Education Forum and the various collaborative arrangements were brought together, you know, the visual impairment, the hearing impairment and so many other services that we had. And the SenCom service, as is named now, is an absolutely wonderful service that we have to get behind and, and, and support. It does so much, as we've just clearly heard, and, and, and has done for so many years. And the beauty of coming together as a collaborative amongst authorities, it creates that strength and resilience and that, that pool of expertise, because the type of people who work with these young people, they're drawn from a very small pool, there's a, difficult to find the staff and it's important that we share the expertise we have within the region. And sadly, when I heard of this, when I heard of the Newport pulling out, you suddenly realise that actually that resilience, that pool is going to be dissipated to a degree. And how does that, you know, and I feel for the young people who are going to be affected in Newport, because at the moment, they're still our, they're part of our shared service, they are our, our young people. And, and I know Newport can do as they wish, but when it affects Monmashire's young people through the breakdown of relationships, which have been fostered over many years, for those who are slightly older, you know, that is wrong and that's where we as a council have a role to play, to protect our young people as a result of, of what I think sadly is an ill thought out move. I'm not sure what the full rationale is for the Newport proposal, other than I know that it demonstrates in their mandates or a cash saving. You know, in, we know it's times, we know times are hard, we're just going out for a budget consultation now on difficult things, but, you know, there are some things that you just, you know, you shouldn't even be considering. And, and I'm hoping, because Newport's budget proposals are out for consultation, the same as ours, that they reflect further and reflect perhaps watching in and hearing the debate today. And they need to reflect and take, take stock and really think again about, is this the right way forward for their own young people? We all have a duty of care for the people we serve and it is absolutely right and proper that we maintain that support for the most vulnerable in our community. Moving away from the need, I just think it's a great shame that established collaborative arrangements, which have been in place for many years, can be suddenly broken apart. You know, that does not bode well when we're in a way, in a time of, of local government involvement where there's a greater emphasis and need to work together, because some of the parts is always greater than the whole in most circumstances. So Roz, I'm really pleased you came in and made that case strongly to help us support Dimitri's motion, which is absolutely right and proper and one I don't want to play political games with, it's just this is about, is it, you know, the right thing to do? The right thing to do is to support this service, no matter what political party you're in. And, and I here as leader today, along with the rest of us here, will commit that this county council remains absolutely firmly committed to this service and to work with all the partners, especially those who obviously want to work with us. So I thank you once again, Dimitri, I will be certainly supporting this motion.
Thank you, Leader. councillor Grokot?
I've got you down, don't worry, don't do any stories as I...
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to second the motion and in so doing, thank councillor Fox very much for the words he's just spoken. I asked colleagues in the Labour Group if I could second this motion and I guess that part of what I'm going to say is for the public, rather than for those of us assembled here. Back in 1989, I joined Gwent as the holder of a brand new post in special educational needs. I wrote the original reports to the county council, setting up the hearing and visually impaired services and a range of other services that really enabled Monmashire to move forward with parents, with fellow professionals in setting up a range of services that met these very complex and very challenging needs that a considerable number of our young people faced. And when I saw what Newport were proposing to do, I really felt quite shattered. The problem has already been partly alluded to and that is that, having set up these services back in the very early 1990s, there was a real difficulty in staffing them because the expertise out there is quite rare. We were able to appoint and keep really very skilled staff and it has been tremendous that that has carried on until the present day. And therefore, there is a very real problem in saying that instead of one service that needs to be staffed, there is now potentially going to be two services that need to be staffed. Is the new service going to try to pinch the people who work for the rest of South East Wales or are they going desperately to search elsewhere for their new team to take their new service forward? But sitting alongside that, which is a point that's not yet been made, under the future generation's wellbeing legislation and successive special educational needs legislation, there is a duty to work with fellow professionals. Those professionals in the Anirin Bevan Health Board or in housing or in the police or in social service departments, as well as education departments, will, will those external organisations have their capacity to serve two services for hearing and visually impaired? Will the health people come? Will the police come? Will the other people, who we're now required by law to enter into partnerships with, they will simply not have their own staff? And so I fear greatly for the parents and their children in Newport. And I really am heartened to hear that there is cross-party support within this chamber and I hope that sends a very loud message to my party colleagues in Newport, who I think are making a really very, very seriously wrong decision here. And as I say, I speak not so much for people in this chamber who already believe that, but maybe for people who are watching outside, so that parents and children in Newport know that they're not alone in wanting the best possible service.
Thank you very much. councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. It was really enlightening and I really appreciate you coming on and it's quite difficult to just stand up and speak to all of us while we don't know the details. And I think that the issue really is the devil in the detail and the unknowns and the fear factor of this. I spoke with the head of service, the head of sensory and communication support services on Thursday and he spent at least 20 minutes with me on the phone, explained to me the potential threats, where, where the anxiety lie. And, and, and I do also share concerns about the, the impact this might have, particularly on the people of Monmashire and the families and the children. And we should remind ourselves of the corporate responsibilities. We talk about corporate parenting, this is precisely one of those issues that we need to scrutinise and look at very carefully. So my suggestion is, and I'm not sure whether it's appropriate, Martin, is that we actually invite Roger along to give us a clear briefing and look at the potential risks and the details, because the devil is always in the detail, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Many years ago, I did some work with an organisation called the Vision Foundation up in Ybbs Vale and they do, did something very similar to this. And actually, sitting in there with those children, babies, and seeing the difference that it makes to their lives, a little bit of support, a little bit of love and a little bit of fun as well, the, the things that they had, the most cruel thing for me was the smell of the toast that they had for their breakfast, because those are little ones, they'd sit around the table waiting for their toast to come out and the smell of toast cooking in there, I don't know how they cope with it on a daily basis. It was, it was something to behold. I'm walking through the door and seeing that little baby in the pram and she's beautiful, you know, right little dazzler, isn't she? Let's be fair. I, as a trade unionist, I don't think we can do anything other than, you know, get this council to make sure that we do commit and it's really good to hear Peter saying that he is going to commit to it. As local members and members of the public, none of us really realise half the things that are going on across the whole county of Gwent. I don't remember Gwent much, but Martin's much older than me, so he probably says. Going, going around the county and you hear these things, when do you ever hear about them when something goes wrong? You know, you never hear about when things go right and, and what they're doing and it's been a real eye opener for me to see some of the things that's going on with these little ones and from my point of view, I mean, I'd absolutely support you and anything that I can do to help, I will. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. councillor Richard John, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, can I pay tribute to councillor Petroni for bringing forward this, this motion? I think it's, it's a great challenge to take on, to take on vested interests and to stand up for what you believe in, but in your contribution today, you've made a really passionate, really passionate contribution and that, that takes courage and, and I thank you also to Roz for coming in and you've spoken more powerfully and eloquently than any of us could have done about, about this issue. Because it's, sometimes we have debates in here and they can feel a bit, a bit detached from, from reality, but Lola's here, she's in here, she's four months old and we're, we're the guardians of this county. How do we want to see Lola's life turn out? You know, we have a responsibility in this chamber because she's four months old and has her life ahead of her and, you know, we've made a clear commitment that we want every child in Monmashire to have the very best start in life. And this decision could impact on that. This decision could, could impact on some of the opportunities that should be open to her, that are open to, to other children, that she shouldn't face additional hurdles in life because of, because of her disability. So you've really brought home to us today how big and important this, this decision is for us. So thank you for, for that and, and thank you Dimitri for, for bringing this forward. Now, I, I know the cabinet member for education in Newport and the, the leader of Newport and I, I know they, they care about the most vulnerable children in, in, in their, in their county. So I don't understand this, this decision and I also don't understand how they believe that in Newport they can recreate a specialised service in-house for significantly less resource. The Sensory and Communications Support Network, SenCom, has been a joint service between the five South East Wales authorities, at least since 1996 in its current form, supporting our most vulnerable young people with sight loss, hearing loss and other sensory loss. In this year alone, 359 Monmashire children and young people have benefited from the SenCom service. Now, while I haven't seen evidence that Newport have undertaken equality impact assessments, wellbeing of future generations assessments, the fact that notice was given to the four other local authorities on the last possible day, six months to the day of their withdrawal, has made it impossible for the other four authorities to do such, such impact assessments. I note that this move has been criticised by the RNIB, by the Wales Council of the Blind, by Guide Dogs Cumry and by Sight Cumry. Newport's withdrawal from the service presents a number of risks to existing service users, not least due to the uncertainty that this creates over the future of the service, which has significantly impacted on staff morale. The ongoing regional service is going to lose a quarter of its specialised staff, equating to over half a million pounds. That's a significant number of redundancy notices that would need to be issued. The resulting reconfiguration of the service will have a significant impact on the families and those relationships which have been developed between sight, speech and hearing specialists and the children that they support, many of which, as we've already heard, have been supported since birth. These professionals know the children that they work with, they recognise their needs and they've earned their trust over many years. Both SenCom's equipment and specialist professionals, sorry, and professionals are really specialised and a reduced service risks reducing the broad, the broad range of provision that's on offer at the moment. Now, the borders between Newport and the, the other authorities in South East Wales are porous. We know that children move from, from Newport to Monmashire and vice versa. We know that there are transition arrangements between schools and this departure creates additional instability for those families, which would only be to the detriment of already vulnerable young people. Now, I can reassure parents in Monmashire that we remain committed to this regional service. I've spoken at length to cabinet members for education in Torvine, in Bliner Gwent and in Caerphilly and we are all committed to continuing this regional service. Joint working between the remaining authorities is well advanced in establishing how the service will continue, but admittedly, the service will be less resilient in future. But we are committed to ensuring that children retain the same amount of face-to-face time that, that they get at, at the moment. All affected families have been written to pledging our commitment to continuity and provision and they'll receive further correspondence in January, offering reassurance about what the SenCom experience is likely to be from April onwards. We've taken steps to mitigate the impact of Newport's decision on vulnerable children with sensory loss in Monmashire. That said, there is still time for Monmashire to re, sorry, for Newport to reconsider this decision and I hope they will. We're stronger, more resilient and can provide more effectively for some of the most vulnerable children in South East Wales by working together. I know that we're all under financial pressure, but I appeal to councillors in Newport, please listen to the voices of parents, to the expertise of the RNIB and recommit to an effective regional service for our most vulnerable children. The leader of the opposition has shown great principle in bringing this motion forward today and I hope that every councillor will vote in favour of it.
Thank you very much. councillor Frances Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. For probity, can I just declare an interest as a member of Anirin Bevan Health Board, because the health board is not a direct provider of the service but is engaged. I don't think it's prejudicial at this point, so, but I just mention it. I, I just wanted to pick up on the point... I just wanted to pick up on the point around the communication that Newport is putting out about this decision. As a member of the public, I had a quick look on their website, and it says very clearly that they are not going to see any reduction in service for people in receipt of the services. And I was asking, I tried to look for the impact assessment, and I can't find it anywhere. And I was going to ask if colleagues have seen the equality impact assessment or the future generations assessment, and indeed importantly, to ask Roz if it's been made available to families.
No, and I think they have been member of that. And I don't think it's a family's issue.
Okay, and I was going to ask if officers could procure those assessments and circulate them to members to kind of further inform, you know, our position. I think that would be really helpful at this juncture, because obviously, it's a matter of law, it's a legal requirement, and Newport council will have completed those in order so that its members were well informed when they decided to move to this decision. And I think actually, members, this is a really good illustration of why they are so important and how we do need them at the basis of all our budget decisions. And of course, if Newport haven't undertaken that, and I'm pretty, they must have, then they put themselves in a very precarious position and open to legal challenge. I will be supporting Dimitri's motion, and I suppose all we can do in this particular instance is try to understand those impacts and mitigate them as best we can, members. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. Well, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that we'll liaise with colleagues in Newport to arrange for those documents, if they exist, to be passed through to members and any other interested stakeholders.
Yeah. councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Just to say publicly how proud I am to be a member of the Labour group that has Dimitri as our leader. What he's done today is very brave, and I think it's been appreciated throughout the chamber, just how brave he has been. All the good words have been said, I don't need to say any more, but it looks like this council will be wholeheartedly supporting this motion, and I certainly will be. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Roger. councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Dimitri, and I'd like to thank Roz. It was certainly a very profound presentation. And I'd just like to reiterate councillor John's comments about caring for young people and how it is our duty. I am chairman of the corporate parenting panel, and I would just like to say that it is the duty of every member to protect and offer services and provision and look after children whatever their needs. So please bear that in mind when you're voting. Thank you, Dimitri.
I've got one more speaker, which is Sarah Jones, and then I'm going to bring it to a conclusion. councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair, and I can be brief, because most of what I was going to say has already been said very eloquently. We all know this service is hugely important. I really admire Roz for coming and speaking to us today, and I'm so proud of you. Thank you. And also Dimitri, I've got great admiration for you for bringing such an important motion to us and for clearly putting children and the needs of our children first and at the forefront of our minds. Roz has articulated, as everyone has said, much better than any of us can here, and she represents all those parents, she gives a voice to those parents and to those that don't have that voice and who experience the benefits of the service firsthand. Many of the children that are accessing the service depend on that continuity, and this decision by Newport clearly threatens this and the long-term resilience of the service going forward. And then just finally, the Welsh Government itself has described SenCom as a very, very good example of councils working together to create a specialised service. We've heard firsthand why that's so important, and I know we'll all support this, 100% unequivocal support, and hope that that support can somehow influence the decision of our colleagues in Newport. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Petroni, do you wish to sum up?
Simply to say, Chairman, the message is clear. Our passion is clear and our commitment is clear. Can I ask for a recorded vote, please?
Yeah, we've got, seconded, okay.
Do you need nine more?
Yeah, nine, please stand. I think we've got enough. Yeah. So that you understand, Roz, these are rare occasions, but we will record that we are supporting you, and with all the luck in the world, every member here will vote to support this motion. You'll hear now if anybody doesn't.
councillor Petroni.
Four.
councillor Becker.
Absolutely four.
councillor Brown.
Four.
councillor Clark.
Four.
councillor Davis.
Four.
councillor Davy.
Four.
councillor Dimmock.
Four.
councillor Eason.
Four.
councillor Edwards.
Four.
councillor Evans.
Four.
councillor Fekins.
Four.
councillor Fox.
Four.
councillor Grokut.
Four.
councillor Harris.
Four.
councillor Higginson.
Four.
councillor Howard.
Four.
councillor Howarth.
Four.
councillor John.
Four.
councillor Jones, David Jones.
Four.
councillor Laura Jones.
Four.
councillor Penny Jones.
Four.
councillor Sarah Jones.
Four.
councillor Brian Jones.
Four.
councillor Jordan.
Four.
councillor Lane.
Four.
councillor Murphy.
Four.
councillor Pavia.
Four.
councillor Powell.
Four.
councillor Pratt.
Four.
councillor Rodin.
Four.
councillor Smith.
Four.
councillor Taylor.
Four.
councillor Thomas.
Four.
councillor Watts.
Four.
councillor Watkins.
Four.
councillor Webb.
Four.
councillor Williams.
Thank you.
In my 30 years in this place, I have never seen, and I'm serious now, such a rare occasion. Congratulations, Dimitri, you to be admired for bringing that before us this afternoon. Thank you all very much indeed. We go back now to agenda item number three, which is my announcements, which are all written in the agenda for you to read. Yeah, okay. And receipt of petitions. I think councillor Lane, you have a petition for me?
If you just, Malcolm, if you just tell the council what it was about.
Indeed, it gives me great pleasure to tell the council what it was about. It's about the old Hereford Road which runs through the Mardi to Traly. The speed limit on that road is returned to 60 miles per hour in a built-up area. It's very, very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Just wait for Paul to come back. He's just saying farewell and thank you to our guests.
Chairman, may I just add? As soon as there is a response to the petition, we will pull back the council, please.
Yeah, sure.
Because I should wear them off.
You're always loving his talking.
Yeah, the bonfire can still.
Yeah, yeah, it was fantastic. You know, we said, hey, no, no, she's with us, isn't she? So it's, we're all crammed into the same house. You know, it's time to be, you know, it's time to be, it's time to drink, isn't it? Different world now, isn't it? People are definitely not spending as much, aren't they? That's what they're saying, even online now. Is it ASOS? I'm trying to think, the online retailer? They've taken it, ASOS, thank you. They've taken it hammering.
Okay, everybody. councillor Jordan. The next item on the agenda is item 42. councillor Watts, please. councillor Watts, we are in session again. councillor Petroni, it's your motion, item 42.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Expect more difference of opinion maybe on this one. As it should be, Chairman, as it should be. Last year, the last year's budget, I proposed something similar in terms of raising more revenue for the council. We all know local government's under pressure across the country, and I don't want to get into the debates about austerity, but that is the context we're in, and we need to generate more revenue. Everyone agrees on that. And one of these is, this is a possible way, as I described in the budget last year, of doing so, which is basically, Welsh Government legislated two years ago, I believe, to allow councils to potentially increase council tax up to 150% on properties that have been left vacant for over six months. I asked officers going about maybe a year and a half ago, if we were to introduce such a thing in this council, how much could it potentially generate? And it was a form just over £200,000, hence why that figure is in there. So I haven't plucked a figure out of my head, that was from professional advice. The administration decided to vote against that last year, which was deeply regrettable, because I think, basically, you have to possibly implement this, you need a year's consultation with residents anyway. So if we had passed it last year, we're coming into this year, we'd be possibly 200 grand more into the account, which would help not solve our problems but help in what we're facing right now. I was just going through my emails, because I remember at the time I had an email from a resident, or actually I had emails from several residents, and they were candid with me, they're not natural Labour supporters, I appreciate their honesty, but they were supportive of what I had talked about, because they lived in rural areas and rural communities and rural villages. And they're quite lengthy emails, but one bullet pointed them for me, that from their personal experience, they had noticed in their local village, a lot of more empty properties, and they've been vacant for a while, and you know as well as I do, in villages, people talk, they know everyone, they know who used to live there, and they haven't been, they haven't seen anyone for months. And that they have noticed a real downturn in their local communities due to a lot more of these, what maybe are possibly, I don't know for sure, but holiday homes. I would suggest, because Monmouthshire's such a beautiful county, so accessible, I know Cornwall and Devon have similar issues, where these are becoming a holiday home place, where people can come to Wye Valley and just have a second home, but live most of their life somewhere else. And that's fine, they can do that, as long as they just pay a bit more to help us out in the troubles that we face in those communities. And this resident, bullet pointed for me, such people who move in and leave these homes vacant, reduce the amount of affordable homes or homes, full start, for people in those rural communities, particularly young people in those rural communities, there's a drop in community spirit, because obviously there's someone not physically there. The local revenue in shops and post offices and local businesses, I believe, we talked about good news yesterday, they still need customers, and obviously if these little villages become ghost towns in effect, that won't be helpful for them. And also in terms of volunteering sector, and I know this council, across party places, rely on well-meaning, well-intentioned volunteers, but if they are, you know, if the communities are dying because there's nobody there, or they're only there for two, three months of the year, they're no longer going to be there, and there's more homes coming to that who have become empty second homes, basically. There's going to be less and less people to do that in the communities that need them, to be honest. And this gentleman was really, really supportive, and I must admit, I was surprised to receive the email from, as he says, a hostile person to the Labour Party. But it shows that actually there's a consensus, I would argue, in communities across this county about such homes. And this is a way, a mechanism, by which we could potentially start addressing that issue in our rural communities, and generate a revenue to help us in our battle to keep services going with the money being really tight at the moment. And I lastly put on the end of the motion about £30,000 to help with tuition fees of local young carers. Because nationally, there were some press reports around local young carers across the country, on average, only 6% go to university in any cases, while they're still caring or their caring's finished. 6%, which is a pathetic figure across the nation. There was kind of a lot of lament about why it was such a low figure. And then I did the analysis for Monmouthshire, and Monmouthshire is only at 3% of our local young carers go to university, either while they're still caring, or in the past at least, I can't talk about the future, but in the past, only 3%. And I just felt this is a possible means of generating a revenue where we can, in our power now, help them or give them a leg up in their lives, because we all know, it's not the only way, absolutely not. If, you know, there's apprenticeships, I totally appreciate that, but university still remains, and all the academic research says this, means one of the biggest contributors to a person doing really well in their life, better income, better health, you name it, it goes up when a young person goes to university. That is why so many young people go to university. And we should encourage local young carers where we can. We can't solve the problem, we can't make it, 50%, of course we can't. Will the 30,000? Make sure everyone goes and they've got no costs after it, of course it can't, but we can help. It's a stepping stone. And I know many colleagues on this side of the benches, we know that tuition fees, I know Wales is slightly different, but tuition fees can be very off-putting if you're from a poor family where money is tight, even if you have to earn a certain amount to pay it off. It's the figure in your mind, it's a psychological effect, when you realise, oh, I'm going to come out of university, I'm going to have that debt over my head. And that, if it's just if you do a normal three-year degree, if you want to become a doctor or pharmacist, we're talking six years, seven years potentially, depending on what you go on to study. And we can help. And you know me, my previous motion, motions I bang on about for what now, seven years, social justice, and I know many across the bench believe in that too, this is a means by which we can contribute, contribute to our local young people, doing tremendous things for their families. And if we can at least get to 6%, that's, I worked out at least eight or nine more young people going to university from this council because of direct action from us, and I think it's a job well done.
Thank you. councillor Phil Murphy, is that seconded in motion, by the way? Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dimitri. I've got absolute sympathy with every part of your argument there. What I have got a problem with is the mechanics of this. We did a similar exercise a couple of years ago, where we increased the council tax on vacant properties from 50% to 100%. That affected some 600 properties, and there was quite a substantial backlash to that. And there was heavy officer involvement at the time in having to deal with this. But this particular motion talks about second homes. And you're absolutely right, there is a 12-month lead-in time to that. So if we decided to start that consultation before April 19, clearly we'd have to wait until April 20 before we can do it. But for council tax purposes, second homes have their own classification, and we wouldn't record whether these properties were empty, and by their very nature, unless they're declared empty, you don't know that they are. So the practicalities are particularly difficult here with that specific proposal. We do have a list of notified second homes, there's 152 of them. And if we did what we were able to do, and that is to charge a premium of up to £100, So, you know, we could, if we were minded to do this, implement 10% of £30,000, that's where you get your 10%, your £30,000 from, and obviously 25 would be 75, and 50 would be around the 150. So there is, in theory, an amount of money which we could get in. But what we've done, we've looked at this now for the last couple of years, and looked to see how other authorities are getting on, who decided to go ahead with it. And around seven authorities have actually gone down that route. Their findings are that increasingly owners are not declaring these properties as second homes, many owners are actually getting the properties reclassified as holiday lets. What happens then is, of course, they don't pay council tax, they pay NMDR, they pay business rates. So that benefit's lost. And, you know, clearly, they're finding that what they thought was a benefit in doing it has turned out not to be a benefit in doing it. So what you think you're actually going to get in, you end up not getting, and you go through a lot of administration to achieve very little. So taking the lead from other authorities, and that seems to be increasing, we're finding that what, in theory, is a very good idea, in practice, is turning out not to be. So I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to support your motion as it is, for practical reasons, but I am very grateful for it. I'm not going to deal with the latter parts of the motion, because other Cabinet colleagues have got particular points on that, so I shall just leave it at that for the time being.
Thank you. Councillor Watts, are you awake?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to support the motion, but I have some concerns inasmuch as that, so if we do get to the stage where, I mean, we do live in a county where there are many, many older people, and inevitably, and sadly, we all have to drop off the edge at some point. If you go through that process, which is a very difficult and stressful process for many, many families, they have to go through probate, this can take months and months and months and months, and really kind of this wrangles or whatever, it's just never-ending. I'm disappointed today, in fact, that we haven't got the housing officer here today in Bakewell to talk about some of the issues relating to what is a let, what is a second home, and identifying that, because it would be kind of clearer. I'm not entirely sure how many additional lets there are, and I take Phil's point about what's a let and what's a second home, where if you look on Airbnb, which I have done, I haven't got a house on there, I've just about got a shed at the back of my garden, but there aren't that many properties in Monmashe, and I was surprised, I thought there would have been, that are on Airbnb, for example. And it's a global issue, that is, about holiday lets and local taxation and local, I guess, that local kind of accountability that comes with that. So I will support the motion, but I think we need some further clarity from officers about the extent of second homes and how you identify them, if that makes any sense at all, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to briefly address the issue of young carers, and whilst I'm sympathetic and grateful for the concern and the proposal, in a way, I'd just like to point out that young carers are not always registered, they're not always, they do not always want to be identified, and in fact, many of them, a majority of them, like to be anonymous. So they are not, they cannot be included in anything if they do not want to be. We do have a young carer support, and they provide social events, and they provide support where it's needed, and encouragement to carry on with the education. And one event, I went to, a young pupil had just got into university, and there was great celebration. So I don't think it is practical, from that point of view, the idea that you have. If you meant more looked-after children, then of course we look after, support them until they're 25, including help with accommodation, living expenses, tutorial fees, and any other support that they need. So I just thought I'd clarify that, because, you know, that would be a difficult thing to implement, but I understand the idea. Thank you, Chair.
Paul Pogba.
Paul Pogba.
Paul Pogba.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Just a note, I'm referring to Conwy County Borough Council, and in 2017, they indicated they voted for a charge of 25% council tax premium on second homes, 100% long-term empty homes from April 2019. That decision was in fact revoked earlier this month.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dimitri, for bringing this. Yeah, sadly, I don't think we quite have the unity of a vote on this one. However, the sentiments are still well-made around it, and I think many of us have sympathy with those sentiments. None of us like seeing empty houses in our communities, for whatever reason. It's often difficult to ascertain just what those reasons are. I think that Armand hit it on the head, you know, sometimes probate can take a couple of years, and the house can't be disposed of in that period, so obviously concessions need to be factored in on, you know, all of those things. We have given this consideration several times over the years. The evidence is showing, and it's been demonstrated a bit more today, that this perhaps isn't all as easy or can deliver as much as perhaps we might assume. So I'm struggling, on the back of a motion, just to agree this. I think we've all recognised that, well, we know, the facts are, you have to have a long lead-in time, and in fairness, you raised this before, but there is need for a deeper options appraisal around this, I think, to get a deeper understanding of what we really are meaning here, and what the potential is, and the flavour of what that could genuinely generate. Yes, how you want to suggesting to use some of this fund around young carers is, again, something we share sentiments with, but I think Councillor Jones clarified very clearly around that. I've not had any direct approaches or requests from any of our young carer support groups to suggest that there is a desire for support in, and I would be more than happy and sure as Penny would be, to receive those requests from those support groups. And wherever we can help our young carers, we always have been committed to helping the best way we can. So I think there is a deeper piece of work around this, and I think Armand was indicating something similar about a deeper understanding. So to make a commitment here, I'm afraid I can't do that. I can see that this plays into your budget strategy, which we'll approach, well, the end of February, but it's something we are looking at. So I'm afraid, Dimitri, on this one, whilst I recognise the sentiments around it, I won't be able to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Tudor Thomas, please.
Thank you, Chair. I fully support the motion, I understand some of the difficulties in actually working out what is a holiday let and what is probate, et cetera. But in reality, as a matter of principle, to have a second home, you have to be affluent to actually afford it. And it's rather ironic, when you look at the housing lists in Monmashe as an authority, that there are so many people who can't afford to buy a home, they can't afford to rent a home, or they can't get one, let alone have a second home. And at the end of the day, people who have second homes, they're not living there, they're not sending their kids to the local school, they're not contributing to society, and really, they're creating sort of rural ghost towns. If you go to some of the rural areas in Monmashe, particularly you go towards the Clantoni Valley, there are more corporate bankers and solicitors up there with second homes than there are farmers, or dare I say it, even sheep. So I fully support the motion.
I won't thank you for that remark. Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. At the risk of sounding a little bit repetitive, I think I struggle with this, not just because it's quite a busy motion with a lot of issues inside it, it's just in terms of the way that the figures don't necessarily stack up, based on what I've heard from my Cabinet colleagues and the work they've done over the last couple of years around this issue, and also around those unintended consequences that are likely to come forward. There's a lot of questions that this motion raises, is this a revenue raiser, is it about bringing homes back into use, maybe it's about answering all of those. But I think ultimately it touches on a much bigger issue, and that's around housing availability, and how we try and ensure an improvement in that area. And work is already ongoing in that regard. I know Councillor Watts has made a valid point around numbers, I mean, for example, we've talked today about second homes, 152 second homes we've got on record, with our empty houses estimated at around 600 to 700. So it's doing a further piece of analysis and review around that, to look at how we can get better access, better data around those empty properties, to bring them back into use. And a lot of that, as I said, is already happening, so for example, the urban housing capacity that we're looking at through the LDP review, and similarly around that data piece around empty houses. I think just in terms of the latter point on the motion, in terms of that fund coming into the social justice brief, again, a really laudable aim, and totally appreciate the sentiments behind both the motion itself and also the proposal on that front. I think if any of this work that I've referenced does actually bear fruition, does provide an income stream, personally, I'd like to address the need to use that to tackle homelessness and prevention in terms of the homelessness agenda, and I hope that can come forward in the future under the social justice arm. But as I say, I think a very laudable motion, but data suggests we wouldn't raise the funds we want, and it would have unintended consequences, and we should look to the further work and analysis that we're already doing on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. Councillor David Dovey.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a thought about this, and it really is about the fact that this initial motion that Councillor Petrucci came up with was made some little while ago now, a couple of years ago, I think. What goes through my mind is the market has changed, and anybody who has a house, a second house at the moment, and they're not using it particularly, if all of a sudden they are going to get a raise in their rates from us because they're not using it, it might just be the case that they have a second thought about this asset that they have, and they're not using it. And with the inflated market that there is in Monmashe at the moment, they might very well choose to sell the house, rather than make it available as we would ideally want. That is a thought that I've had since we discussed this earlier this week amongst other members. And so I'd like Phil to make a comment on that, does he think that the change in the market will affect the number of houses that we will be able to put a surcharge on, a tax on, because they might very well sell them and capitalise on them?
Thank you, Councillor Dovey. Councillor Louise Brown, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate the good intentions behind this particular motion, but I think the devil is in the detail here, because the first sentence says, starts the process of increasing council tax on second homes that have been vacant for over six months in the next financial year. It then goes on to note, and then gives the example of holiday homes, but obviously, the issue of, the main motion as I read it, is actually about second homes that have been vacant for over six months in the next financial year. Now, there's all sorts of different reasons why homes could be vacant, obviously probate is one, but I'm also concerned about how this might affect our elderly population as well, who need to downsize and go into things like warden-assisted accommodation, and then wait for their house to actually sell, because they're actually in need at that particular time. And what this motion could end up doing would be put extra strain in that situation, where effectively they will be paying three lots of council tax, double the council tax for the empty property that they're going to be selling, that might take well over a year to sell, plus their other accommodation as well. So it could place an awful lot of strain upon people who are particularly vulnerable. So there's a lot of different reasons why homes might be empty, there could have been a flood or a fire, and they need a second home because of this, and I don't think this particular motion addresses the complexity of this particular issue. Also, I understand that in St Ives, where this has been used, it has had the impact of increasing the prices of property, and builders not actually wanting to build there anymore, and looking at different areas. So I don't think it's quite as simple as being made out. And in addition, what's happened in other areas is that instead of being able to obtain one lot of council tax off the property, it could end up being that it's then transferred to a business type of property and seen as a self-catering holiday let, and thereby, you know, business rate exemption to be claimed, and therefore actually result in a loss of revenue. So I don't think it's quite as simple. I understand the good intentions behind it, but I do think this is quite a complex issue that would need to be looked at in more detail. Other examples of people where there might be another home where it's been vacant for over six months would be for contracting, people who come on contract employment and who don't actually, aren't here the whole of the year, but need it for employment purposes. So there's an awful lot of reasons in this first sentence, and I think it's a fairly complex matter. Thank you.
Councillor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Following on from that contribution, I don't quite understand how somebody going into a K home and having to sell their home class as a second home, but that one went past me completely, I really don't understand the last post. It's good to see, though, that we've all gone back to type now, and we're all back in the swing now, Pete, eh? It's Christmas. So I'm going to do a little bit of type of my own. In the absence of my colleague, Councillor Greenland, I'd like to make an amendment, if I may. I'd like to amend the first line, Chair, if I may, when it says that the council starts the process of increasing council tax. What I'd like to do is change it to that the council starts the process of examining the possibility of increasing council tax, which all my friends to the right of me here seem to agree with and seem to wish this motion said. So I'm quite happy to put that in, in the style of Councillor Greenland. I'm going to put my little amendment to say, enter Councillor Williams, that the council starts the process of examining the possibility. Maybe we can do it as a select committee, or, you know, as a group, or something like that. So what we'll do, we'll examine the possibility, if that's acceptable, Chair. Thank you very much.
Seconded, right, thank you. We are now debating Councillor Williams's amendment. Tony, is this on the amendment or on the original motion?
Sorry, I'm flashing my mind back to maybe two or three years when Councillor House was chairman of Strong Communities, he's not here at the moment. If I remember rightly, this came to Strong Communities as a matter for discussion, and I think, if my mind serves me right, three years going back is a long time, that we were going to set a process in place where we can investigate this at that time. It's like a lot of things which go to select committees, sometimes they fall off the end of the cliff and you don't see them again. But I notice that, Count, that Mr Bakewell is in the background, and he would be presenting this to Strong Communities, I don't know whether he has a view on whether you would expect the officers to have a view on what we did say or what we might have said.
Councillor Fox.
Yeah, on the amendment, thank you, Kevin, for trying to move things forward. However, the motion includes other areas which we can't really work to, so you'd have to rewrite the whole motion, and that wouldn't be an amendment. So I'm afraid I can't support, I won't be able to support the amendment either, because the work is already going on as well. No, but you can't, an amendment has to apply to the motion, which I accept it would be. However, for us to support it, the amendment would have to go so much wider to alter things here, that it would not be the original motion. So, well, that's from my perspective, so I won't be able to support it either.
Sit down for that. Hold on, hold on, I'm chairman, hold on. Just sit a minute while I...
Can you repeat that last sentence again?
Will you sit down, Armand? I'm running the meeting. Right, you're next, Dimitri. here that it would not be the original motion. So, well, that's from my perspective, so I won't be supporting it either.
Sit down for that. Hold on, hold on, I'm chairman, hold on. Just sit a minute while I...
Can you repeat that last sentence again?
Will you sit down, Armand? I'm running the meeting. Right, you're next, Dimitri.
Shock. I got the funny feeling, no matter what we said, there was going to be no support. I'm actually shocked that you're not taking this opportunity on. I did think you guys were going to talk about the practicalities of this. So I did a bit of digging, you know me, sad individual. And I really do appreciate Louise Brown telling me things are more complex than I put in the motion. Thanks for that, councillor Brown. Yes, it is. When we increased the council tax last time, there are a list, a list of exemptions, and I can send them to councillor Brown if she wishes, or anyone else, that we regularly apply in the terms of special circumstances that councillor Watts has talked about and that many others have talked about, which is quite right, which is there are special circumstances whereby it's not appropriate, particularly a death of a family member or caring or whatever. And we do this as a recourse, that's what we do. I just, sorry, I took that as read, but apparently now it's a major, major issue. The select committee of the House of Commons, local government housing have looked at this because the local authorities who led it were Cornwall and St Ives. There is incidentally no land in St Ives, that's why they struggle to build houses in St Ives, lovely place. It is an issue, but the House of Commons have come up with recommendations to circumvent it. It is not beyond the will of men or women to get over this issue. And I'm sad that we are shirking from it. And I pick up councillor Tula Thomas's point, it's also sends out a strong message to those people who do want to use Monmashe as just two, three months in the summer and then disappear. And it sends a message to our rural communities that we do care about them, that they're not left and their villagers are left too, to be deserts where no one goes because everyone just goes there two, three months and is it lovely where no one else lives there. Sends a strong message and we can overcome the practical issues, many of which we've got lists of exemptions, as long as my arm, when I asked about a year and a half ago, of what could be applied when people, so they can complain about it, there's a series of paperwork, they can outline why they're special circumstances and then be exempt. So there's recommendations from the House of Commons about how to get over this. We already have exemptions as outlined by many councillors already as part of recourse. So we can do this and it sends a strong message about an issue that's becoming bigger in Monmashe. And I pick up councillor Dovey's point about the market has changed. The market changes, as you know, the market changes constantly, but the market always responds to what the local authorities are doing. We're not just benign at the wind, like in the wind, just blowing around with the market. We can set the course of the wind as well. So it's not about just telling the market dictating to us, we can also dictate to the market. And I know that's an ideological point that you probably will disagree with, but I think we should make a stand on this. And on the social justice point, local young carers, and if I misheard you councillor Jones, then please feel free to correct me and clarify, that we don't know all the local young carers in Monmashe, that is true. And on that basis, we shouldn't do this. Was that sort of your argument or have I got that wrong?
It isn't just that, there isn't a formal way around this. It's not a formal service as is offered to looked after children. It is more informal, it is on their wishes as to whether they come forward for the support or not. So it is very different. I have had a meeting just now with a person who looks after these young carers and he said that it's never been an issue, they've never had any issue surrounding this at all. I mean, they may in the future and it may be totally different, but they've never had any need to carry out this and have this kind of funding.
Right, so I'm not sure if that, so there's no need for us to increase from our young local young carers from 3% to 6% and we don't know all of them, so we shouldn't do this? Have I got that right? Okay, well, I'll take it as that, that there's no need, which I strongly disagree with because we're, 3% of young carers go to university and I'm not going to go through why university is better for any young person, but it absolutely 100% is. And in Monmashe, yeah, in Monmashe, yeah. And I can send you the figures if you wish. And I know councillor Sarah Jones's thing that she, if we were going to do, she's voted against the motion, so voting against the money, but if we were going to do this and have some money, 30 grand, I presume would go to housing. 30 grand in the housing would help no one pretty much in the housing market as it currently is in Monmashe. 30 grand in helping tuition fees is a much better way to do this. If you want to solve housing in Monmashe, and I don't want to go into this particular bait, you have to build homes that are affordable, that is ultimately how you solve it, not 30,000 pounds in a fund, it will just not even melt the tip of the iceberg. So you wouldn't even go anywhere on the social justice agenda with that. So that is my rationale, we can do this. It's a moral argument as well as a practical argument, but we've got a lot of the practical stuff there and we can learn from the other councillors that councillors have done this, particularly Cornwall. So I completely support councillor Williams's amendment because the amendment allays some of the maybe legitimate concerns of other members around practicalities and exemptions and so forth. Fine, let's delay it another year and have a proper expiration of all these issues so all you can be allayed.
Right, councillor Watts, it's your turn. And can we keep out the histrionics and have us just a straight comment from you? I don't want all this arm waving every time.
The what, chair?
Come on.
The histrionics and the arm waving?
Yeah, you were arm waving at me.
No, I was trying to point out subtly, other than I can't throw a paper, you know, message to you, that we've got the officer here. And that was my, this is the entire bit of my... The entire bit of my contribution here, even though I'm waving my hands at you, is that we have the officer there. Why don't we introduce the officer and ask him whether or not it's a viable option?
We're talking about an amendment to a proposition.
Well, we haven't heard from the officer. Why haven't we heard from the officer, chair?
Because I haven't chosen to call him, that's why.
Chair, can I try and get some structure into this? However, this is put, whether it's the original motion or Kevin's very brave attempt at taking over from councillor Greenland. I'd be prepared to take this, not as it is because it isn't, in my book, it isn't supportable. But I am prepared to take it as a budget suggestion. It's before the 31st of January. We are looking at this anyway with regards to all sorts of aspects of it. So I'll take it as a suggestion for us to look at within the budget round and at least something positive will have come out of it. But, you know, as this is written, it's still not supportable, regrettably.
Are you happy about that or not?
Chairman, I don't remember councillor Greenland ever withdrawing an amendment. But as you said, it's Christmas, so...
I haven't said that at all yet.
Well, somebody did. So it's interesting that you can't support any of it, but you're willing to look at doing it as a budget suggestion, so, well, and take the credit, well, you're going to take the credit for it because it's my amendment and so, yeah, I don't... Excuse me, I'm speaking now, come on. Yeah, okay, I withdraw the amendment, chair. Okay, thank you.
Right, Louise, before you speak, we've withdrawn the amendment, are you wishing to speak on the original motion? You've spoken on the original motion, so I can't go to you.
Chairman, I just wanted to come back in relation to comments that have been made about my comments.
I'm not going into that, Louise.
No, well, I'm sorry, but I was...
Stop.
There was an exemption that...
Stop, I'm not having a cross party argy-bargy this afternoon, it's Christmas. Roger Harris.
Thank you, chair, I thought I'd been forgotten. I'd like some clarity here, although the amendment's been withdrawn, as far as I'm aware from the leader, it wasn't an amendment. So where do we stand legally on that one? And if it's not an amendment, then presumably we can bring this motion up with Kevin's words next time round. Thanks, chair.
Let me help, I'll try to help. From my perspective, there was nothing at all wrong with councillor Williams's amendment. It was just that the leader felt that he couldn't support it and he gave a whole set of reasons for that. The amendment itself was fine. But can I just add, but subsequently, I understand councillor Williams has now withdrawn the amendment anyway, so I think, chair, you've got licence to move forward.
I won't bother clarifying, it was basically that I felt that there was so much wrong with it, you'd have to amend it so much that the motion wouldn't be the motion, you'd have to create a new one.
All right, which being drawn. Councillor Matt Beakins. No, finished, right. Councillor Brown, come on then.
I'd still like to speak because unfortunately, two councillors gave a wrong impression of what I said. I don't need the exemption sent to me because I've found the discounts and they don't cover the elderly person situation that I described of moving into warden assisted accommodation. They only cover going into hospital or a care home. And there's been no answer about the question of the change that happens when people move over to business rates as well. So I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Okay. We're going to the vote now on the original motion put by councillor Petruiny. Those in favour of his motion, please show. Now, it's a difficult afternoon for me as chairman. Right, councillor Thomas, you wish to speak on your motion which is no longer a motion?
Yeah, thanks. I'll keep it brief as it's Christmas, you know, I'm setting it all up. Thank you, chair. Matters have moved on since I put this motion into the county council and at a recent public realm meeting, we were informed that funds had been allocated by Welsh Government to complete phase three in Frogmore Street in Abingavenny and that work has to be completed by the 31st of March 2019. So I don't wish to proceed with the motion. However, I have picked up a great deal of concern from traders and from people catching buses and people are very concerned about the unofficial bus stop near Robert Price on Park Road. This is on a section of the highway which comes under Sutra, the A40, it's got a double white line, it's close to a corner and yet buses are still stopping. I know that highways have told the bus companies not to stop there, but they continue to do that. It is particularly dangerous. And as well, in terms of bus stops and people catching the buses, there is really a very much an ongoing issue with bus stops and bus routes in Abingavenny. If you look at the brand new bus stops and shelters in Leyton Street, the only person I've ever seen there is the invisible man because nobody else uses it. Those issues need to be addressed and we really need to stop the unofficial bus stop on Park Lane and we really need to get the bus stop in at the top side of Tesco's because businesses are suffering and people as well who use the buses can't easily get to the shops and get home. Thanks very much.
I was very tolerant with you then, Tudor, very tolerant.
I'll get you a mince pie after.
Councillor Howard.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I was going to thank Tudor for bringing the motion in the first place. I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago because the matter was raised by residents in my ward and obviously the bus stops in Tudor's and it wouldn't be right for me to put a motion on a matter that's within his ward boundary. However, I do want to make some comments and I think it's great that work on the replacement bus stop is going to start under phase three of the town scheme, but the minutes of the public realm group state that it's going to take about six months to do the work. This means that all bus travellers and particularly elderly or those with mobility problems are expected to use the alternative stop on Hereford Road or the bus station. The existing stop on Hereford Road is on a pavement of substandard width, close to junctions of other roads, so there is a conflict of pedestrians and motor vehicles and no shelter. To use the argument that the temporary stop at the rear of Robert Price, referred to in Tudor's motion, is somehow unsafe, yet the intensification of the use of the Hereford Road stop is okay, is nonsense. If you have to use a walking aid or have limited strength, the bus station, sorry, my notes have disappeared, the bus station is simply too far away, which is why the former Frogmore Street stops were so well used. We should be looking to provide a safe temporary stop by Robert Price and agreeing this with the Welsh Government and to provide a temporary shelter until such time as a new stop is operational. We've heard a lot so far this afternoon, and rightly so, about social justice and our corporate responsibility to look after those who need our support. And that includes preventing freezing cold and wet pensioners from traipsing right across town when there is a simple solution. Yet it appears certainly from the outside that we're wringing our proverbial hands and sticking our head in the sand. I therefore ask for the cabinet member and officers to find a way of setting up a proper temporary stop with a shelter as soon as possible.
Yet again, I've been tolerant as we haven't got a motion. There we go. Paul Jordan.
Thank you, chair. If councillor Howard had been to the public rail meeting, he would have heard that the monies for the construction of the new bus stop must be spent by the 29th of March. So the new bus stop will be there by the 29th of March. As far as the construction of a temporary bus stop outside Robert Price's, Sutra have already indicated that that would not be permitted. Thank you.
Well, we bring it to a halt there. There is no motion, we don't need to take a vote and we're going on to the next one, item 44 by councillor Joe Watkins. Joe, it's over to you.
Thank you. Monmashe's a county in which a large number of our residents commute out of county for work, be that Cardiff, Newport, Bristol or any of the surrounding areas. And many of those people use the rail service in order to get to their places of work. I myself moved to Caldecott 16 years ago and one of the key reasons I moved there was because it had a railway station so I could use the railways to get to work in Newport every day. Every winter, there are disruptions on the railways. But this year, since the change in franchise, the rail service has been absolutely dreadful. There have been continued cancellations and we have a very active rail monitoring group who look after, who work mainly based in Seven Tunnel Junction, but look at also Caldecott and Chepstow and up as far as Lydney, which is obviously not in our county. As I've put in the motion, in particular, one service, the main commuter service, was cancelled 17 days out of 25. This is actually quite unacceptable. Transport for Wales say they try not to affect the same group of customers disproportionately, but these figures are really showing that that is not the case. Those, the people who use Seven Tunnel Junction, Caldecott and Chepstow really are being significantly affected. We don't have a very frequent rail service that runs to Caldecott and Chepstow. We are reliant on the Cardiff to Cheltenham line and that doesn't run more than once an hour. So we really do rely on that line and it does appear that Transport for Wales seem to be prioritising the trains that go into the valleys, which may have three or four trains an hour running on those services. What we would like to ask this council to do is to write to Welsh Government and ask why the standards for service have dropped so significantly and ask them again what direction they are going to give to Transport for Wales to try and solve these issues. The seven bridge tolls have just come off, hooray, we're all absolutely delighted, but this is not the time to then start meaning our rail service becomes completely unreliable. Otherwise, we'll be pushing people into their cars and increasing the problems of congestion on the roads and air pollution. So I would ask this council to support the motion and write to Welsh Government to try and get some good answers and an improvement in the railway service. Thank you.
Is that seconded, please? Thank you, chairs. Councillor Eason.
Thank you, chair. I support councillor Watkins's motion. Residents in my ward have similarly been affected, particularly the ones going to university in the mornings, they have to run from one end of Caldecott to Seven Tunnel Junction if the train doesn't come. And as it was 17 times out of 25, it didn't come. So I took it upon me myself, I spoke to the cabinet member, Brian Jones, some weeks ago, I don't know whether councillor Jones has had response from Welsh Government, but I wrote to the Welsh Government and they responded to me, a pretty generic letter. It said, I put the Dear Tony bit as there, but Transport for Wales has experienced several difficulties at present, which is the combination of issues ranging to autumn along with damage caused to the rolling stock caused by Storm Callum. Essentially, as we work as fast as possible to rectify the issues currently faced by the rolling stock. I have met the chief... I have met the chief executive of Transport Wales to discuss the issues and to provide assurance that a recovery plan is in place. I will continue to hold Transport for Wales to account for these matters and seek regular updates on the rail services that are being delivered as we expect. This is the 5th of December, 14 days on. I would wonder whether our cabinet members had any response from Transport for Wales as to any progress they may be making to stop flat tyres on these rail wagons. It's quite clear to the experts on our transport working group is that there's plenty of rolling stock across Great Britain which could have supplemented this shortfall over the short term. So I don't think we've been served very well. I do believe that Transport for Wales were left in a bit of a mess because of the previous franchisee, Arribas Reva Wales, and I don't think it should take this long for Transport for Wales to put in alternative arrangements. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Brian Jones.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for these various questions, because, you know, you have a right to complain because the service has been absolutely atrocious. We have given our complaints verbally via various officers to Transport for Wales. I will, as requested, send a letter complaining further, and at the next meeting where TFW people will be at in Bridge End, I will give them a thorough ear back, because I don't think this is good enough. I understand they took over some almost clapped-out rolling stock. We've all heard the stories about the square wheels. If you've ever been on a train with square wheels, like I was a couple of months ago, coming back from Manchester to Abingavenny at about midnight on a Sunday night, and the train started behaving in a most peculiar fashion, and I said to the guard, there was only me and my missus on the train. I said, "What's the problem?" "Leaves on the line, sir," he says. Well, I didn't feel like the leaves on the line, it sounded like these amazing square wheels that we're suffering from, where they're basically worn out. But yeah, to come back to the point, I will put pressure on wherever I am able, we will send a letter and hope that we get some action. And all I can say is hope, because I've got very little control as than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. From the chair, can I ask for one other thing to go in the letter?
What?
Those of us who regularly go from Newport to Paddington, when the train signage comes up, it says the following train will be coming in trucks 1 to 10, or carriages 1 to 10. On your ticket, you have a reservation in carriage A. So I asked the lady on the platform, "Where is A, back or front?" She said, "We're not allowed to put it up because Transport for Wales will not enter a computer linkage with GWR so that you can be told the information." I have never heard anything like it in my life. Can you please put that in the letter as well?
I suppose I could put it in the letter, but given that Transport for Wales has no, as you've just alluded to, control at all over First Great Western or Great Western Railway. Well, they're not the same company, so... But I will, if I get the opportunity, also mention that at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm well down chair for travelling first class.
Not first class at all. You'd be actually wrong, Kevin, on that one. Right, nobody else wants to speak? Joe, do you want to wind up?
Well, thank you very much for the supportive comments. I look forward to seeing the letter when it goes forwards.
Okay. We're doing quite well. Councillor Becker, it's your question to councillor Murphy next. Is it as written? You don't need to read it out if it is.
That's fine, take it as read.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thanks for the question, Jaz. Interserve were appointed to undertake the construction of both Caldecott and Monmouth Comprehensive Schools. Caldecott was opened, as you know, in September 2017, and with the exception of resolving the final defects, Interserve have concluded this contract. Monmouth Comprehensive was opened in September 18. The outstanding works relate to the demolition of the previous school buildings and the completion of deficits, a standard contract requirement with new build. We are already working on contingency plans that would result in MCC assuming responsibility for the demolition and the resolution of any outstanding defects. The council is holding retention funds on both projects, which will enable us to step in with limited financial consequences.
Do you have a supplementary?
I don't, actually, it was a genuine inquiry.
Thank you very much. Right, we go now on to item six, report to the Chief Officer for Social Care on Crick Road Care Home. Penny, are you ahead of it? Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I think Colin Ritchie, who's the Integrated Service Manager, is going to come and join us, should there be any queries. But this has been through Adult Select, it has been Members' Seminar, and it has been approved in Cabinet, this item. So the item, of course, is Crick Road Care Home, and we are here to discuss the options outlined in the report. I will go over the recommendations afterwards. The proposal, half waiting for Colin to settle, and then I'll carry on. Okay, thank you, Colin. The proposal to develop an innovative care home that specialises in dementia care, long and short term, and rehabilitation will provide an exciting opportunity to deliver best practice in design and outcomes for people receiving council-run services and support. And it will deliver a sustainable solution that enables the council to remain part of the residential provider market in supporting complex needs, including dementia. You're right. In addition, the services will extend to the community to support people to stay living well in their own homes through outreach, and focus on a true community integration and preventative services. This proposed site, as you know, will replace a Seven View Resource Centre, which is cited in Chepstow, which is somewhat out of favour now because it is quite old-fashioned in its design. This new design, as you will have seen probably from Colin's models, is certainly innovative, and it's based on four households at ground-floor level with the aim to reflect as closely as possible a domestic home-like feel. So it's a home-from-home, I think, is how we could describe it. Initial proposals detail three households of eight to support 24 people with long-term care, and one household of eight to support short-term care. Overall, the design aims to support familiarity for people living with dementia, which is extremely important. And instead of developing a care home for 32 people, we have created four interdependent households for eight people. Scale is hugely important. There is a lot more information, as you can see, but you have, as I said, you've had a Members' Seminar, you've had Adult Select, and it's been through Cabinet, so if you have any questions, we'll take them afterwards. But I will just go through the recommendations. The council consider the options outlined below, and that members approve the Crick Road Care Home scheme to go forward to implementation phase as detailed in Options Three and Appendix One. Case for change. Two, two, that council members endorse the proposals outlined in Appendix One for inclusion in the 2019-2020 capital programme, understanding that members have subscribed to any additions to the programme meeting one of two conditions. Either that the project replaces something already in the capital programme as a higher priority, or that the business case is demonstrably self-funded. Work is progressing, two, three, work is progressing on refining the costs and seeking a more up-to-date valuation of the Seven View site, which may recast the anticipated net cost to zero. However, there remains a small imbalance, and following consultation with finance colleagues, the intention would be to make an additional request to full council to utilise a maximum 300,000 corporate capital receipts from the anticipated available by end of 2018/19. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any questions? Mr Harris?
Thank you, Chair. It's not a question, but I remember the consultation in adults, and we strongly argued for, Penny's talked about a 32-bed unit, we also mentioned a 48-bed unit, which got strong support, and I'd like that to be in the background the whole time. It's crazy to build a single-storey, if we can build two-stores, get 48 beds, and get an appropriate, if you like, outside body. If we can't manage the 48-bed unit on its own, to come in and help it along its way. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Yes, I will ask advice on that now, but also, another thing that we discuss is perhaps room for couples at some stage, or an area for couples. Can I ask Colin to comment on that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. On the, we took strongly on board the comments from elected members at the Members' Seminar and at Select Committee. The proposal is presented as a 32-bed because the capital funding from Welsh Government, one of the key criteria in that is deliverability. And all I can guarantee deliverability at this stage is 32 beds, but the ambition is 48 beds, but that will require partnership work with either Third Sector or Nire and Bevan. The critical problem with that is it's always a challenge to raise the capital funding, but revenue funding to run an additional 16 beds is the biggest challenge. But it's one we're going to tackle, but at this point, I can only guarantee deliverability on the 32 bed, but we will work to the 48. I've already instructed the architects to amend the designs to include a bedroom for couples based on the Select Committee. Thank you very much.
Councillor Fox.
Yes, only to welcome this, it's part of my ward, but it doesn't really matter so much, it's something of importance to the whole of the county. Seven View has served us well, but it's time to re-provision that, and this lends itself to a perfect opportunity to do that. Thanks for all the work that's gone on. Option Three is the option I support, as the recommendations do. Let's just wish it well, and let's make progress as soon as possible. I don't think I need to say any more, it's been through lots of discussion and debate. I think all here believe it's a worthy project, and we just need to see it happen. So happy to second and move the recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Eason.
Thank you, Chair. I support the aim to get 48 beds on the basis that we lost Chepstow Hospital some while ago, and the discussion with the Nire and Bevan Health Board privately and in this chamber was that they wanted to come on board with us, and we wanted them to come on, we on board with them. So a lot of pressure, I believe, should we put on the Nire and Bevan Health Board to come on board with this, and supplement the fact that we've lost Chepstow Hospital. It was a big loss, and we could ill afford to lose it because some of the beds there were dementia beds, and this would be an ideal opportunity for them to give us the support that we believe we now need in the south-east of the county. That's notwithstanding the fact that we've got to do more work in Chepstow Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've got the recommendations on page three of your agenda. I propose that we take all of those three recommendations as one. With all those in favour, please show. Is anybody against? No. Well done. Thank you very much, everybody. We now go on to item six, two, Gwent Homeless Strategy. Is that Penny again? Sarah. Councillor Jones, please. Sarah Jones.
Thanks, Chair. So we're presented today with a regional strategy to tackle homelessness, a strategy that covers the Gwent area, the five local authorities within that area, and which will take us to a four-year period up to 2022. This document that you have in front of you has had extensive consultation, which I will touch on later in my cover and opening remarks. It's been to Select, and it's had extensive consultation right across the region as well as the local authority itself. So it's presented here to you today for adoption as full council, and thanks to Ian and to Stephen, who are both here today, and I'm sure will be able to answer some of the technical questions, for all the work that you've put into this. As the new cabinet portfolio holder for this area, you know, it's great to have people like yourselves working so tirelessly on these issues, and who can help support us in this area. So moving on in terms of the content of the report, we're all aware of the impact of homelessness, what it can have both in terms of individuals, in terms of families, and in terms of the wider community itself. It's something I know that we're all ever mindful of, and I know that everyone here would be absolutely committed to tackling it through the role that we can play as a local authority. But we do know it's a challenge, and we accept that we do need to do more. What is clear is that for most people who are facing homelessness, it's a very complex issue, and it's more than just the lack of a permanent shelter. These problems are complex and require different interventions and different approaches. I think from reading the report and my understanding of it, it really struck home, I think it's page 80 of the report, those reasons for homelessness, those top reasons, it was really sobering reading, and it's something I believe we can address, not just as part of this strategy, as part of a five local authority approach, but also through the work we're doing under the social justice portfolio. There's a lot of work already in process here. Over recent years, we've certainly seen an improved response from a Monmashia County Council level in terms of homelessness and the work that we've undertaken here within the team itself. There's been some really positive initiatives that are outlined within the report and the cover pages. But we, as I said, we need to go further, we understand that the challenges exist, and we feel that the best way to do that is to innovate, it is to be collaborative, and the best way forward is to work with the five, or as part of a five local authority approach. So consequently, we have the strategy that's in front of you today. The approach is going to allow us to share resources, it will allow us to consider the issue right across boundaries. It's an issue that clearly needs a much wider lens than just a Monmashia approach and focus. As I said earlier, the document's had extensive consultation, as you'll see within it. It's been both to Select and much more widely than that. If you look at the research methodology section of the report, you'll see just how extensive that's been. Developing the strategy itself has been very much about listening to the views of all service users as well as the agencies involved, and I think that's absolutely critical going forward, is listening to the service users themselves and those people that have been threatened with homelessness. It's absolutely critical that that conversation continues, and I think just on that point, I wanted to applaud and pinpoint councillor Dimmock in particular in terms of the experiences that she shared through the Select Committee process. It really does demonstrate how this issue can affect anyone, and it's so important that we listen and learn. And we also break down the stigma around homelessness, so there's a real education piece here as part of this strategy as well. So coming to conclusion in terms of my own opening comments, if you've got the report in front of you, you'll see there's five priorities outlined on page two of your cover report, there's 10 strategic objectives, all of which have an action plan to deliver against. I personally expect there to be strong monitoring and scrutiny of this strategy and the action plans as they progress. Indeed, a specific working group has been set up to monitor and evaluate the progress over the four-year period. So I hope that all members here can support the strategy. It's clearly an extensive document, almost 250 pages long, but it's got some huge important messages within it, it's great potential, and a really important piece of work that's been undertaken. For me, option one in the report is clearly off the table. Option two doesn't give us that scale and resource that we need to tackle such a challenging issue for us. And so option three, for me personally, is the only viable way forward to tackle this issue, which is clearly so important to many of us here in this room. So thank you, and happy to take any questions, and obviously, hopefully, Ian and Stephen will be able to offer as well.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any questions? Councillor Petroni?
Thank you, councillor Jones, and I also want to pay tribute to councillor Dimmock for her honesty and candidness about the things she's faced in her life, and it's actually a very hard thing to do in public life, to share these things. It's very easy to just shut up and not say a thing, and pretend the life you have is perfect, which we all know, and all our lives, it's not the case, and I pay tribute to her for doing that. The strategy, God, it's a big document. I read up most of it, I estimate, not all of it. The thing I was struck by is you used the word innovative models a couple of times in there, but I can't see them anywhere. What innovation are you referring to in that document? Stats heavy, well researched, or that's completely legitimate? But I'll be honest, it didn't strike me as anything new. What's new in here that solves the problem that we're facing? You know, housing across Gwent. What, you know, housing across Gwent? Yeah, but we've been saying that for years. I've heard that in this chamber for years. It's just a bit vanilla, this document, in that sense. What's, what's, what is going to really drive change? And I just don't get that feeling. There's no, as far as I could detect, and I haven't read every single page, you don't refer to this council passing a motion about developing its own housing company. Or if you do, I apologise, but I can't, I can't see it. Why is that not in the homelessness strategy? That strikes me as quite bizarre thing to neglect. Or is it a sign that it's been dropped as an idea, even though this council has passed it?
Thank you for that. In terms of the, in terms of the innovation side of things, I think for me, and from obviously being, Steve and I being part of this process, there is, there is still quite a number of conversations to be, to be had. So I think around those, around those actions, you know, some of them, they're not, they're not smart actions as yet, and there still needs to be some things that are worked up. Your point about the size of the, the strategy was a point that we did get a bit of feedback internally about the scale of that, and we did feed that back into the group, but I think there was a desire to leave it, leave it as it was. But I suppose, I suppose in terms of like, the innovation side of things, I think, I think, I think for me is the, I really want to take the learning that we had from a couple of years ago, having, you know, when we were working with Torvine and the joint service there. And I think the idea of that was that we went in there with a bit of a, an innovative model, something a little bit different, and it was across Wales. And, and for me, there is, there was bucket loads of learning from that, that I'd, you know, that I'd be, I'd be really keen to, you know, try to factor in into there. And I suppose what probably is, is, again, is, I have found as part of the, the joint work, I, we do find that Monmashia is a little bit different when we, when we are working with neighbouring, neighbouring authorities around that, shall we use the term, innovation? So, so, so for me, there's, there's those, there's those conversations still to be, still to be had and drilled down. With regards to the, I suppose with regards to the, the housing company and the development of affordable housing, I guess that, that's, that's a, that's a fair comment, and we can, we can factor, we can factor that in. Yeah, so it's certainly not been dismissed from our perspective.
And that's the point, is, no, I'm not, I'm not necessarily just kind of having a go about the length of the report, actually. I think it's such a serious issue, I think, I'm all for research and academic, Ian, so I love all that, and I love the bullet points. It's just, I don't really get from the report, yeah, okay, we know this is the issue, but here's what we're going to really do. This is the innovative stuff. And then I look for the company stuff, and it's just not there, and, and we had a whole debate and a whole discussion, and it's just not in our homelessness strategy, which shocked me. And particularly around the stats where, well, you know better than me, Ian, homelessness is going up actual and at risk year on year. And I don't feel like we're saying anything new, and that, I just, and I don't want to dismiss all the work you've done, it's an amazing strategy, and I realise it takes a huge amount of work, but what's, what's going to break the back of this as it just goes up year on year?
Thank you, Tony Easton.
Chair. It's working now. Yes, I support this strategy. I do, I do have a, however, take it to the number of rough sleepers on counts in Monmashia. I'm aware of individuals who are actually from Monmashia, but they've now gone to Newport, because it's easy, it's for them to be rough sleepers, they find it more beneficial to themselves to be in Newport rather than in Caldercot. So there are three or four, maybe five in Caldercot who flit in and out of being homeless, and I'm aware of all, of all these, these people in this context. So, and I'm also pleased to see that we've got five authorities working together on this, because our residents, I don't know what's like in Abegavenny and in Monmouth, but our residents do get sucked into the city of Newport, and the police are fully aware of some of these rough sleepers who have actually come from, from outside in the county. So I support this and hope that it really puts things together, because as Ian and I am aware, there are hopeless matters in all our wards, and I, and we need to support them. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make? Yeah, Lisa.
I was going to avoid it, but it's kind of hard now that Zara and Dimitri have kindly mentioned me. Without going into too much detail of my situation again, the one thing I do have to say is, we can't stop the loss of someone we love, but we can help those suffering grief. We can assist when a breakdown of relationships and family relationships break down. Healthcare, more support and intervention can also help. When I suffered my first stroke, that's what they're calling it now, at the time, I was told it was stress. You're stressed and you're suffering from grief, which then I ended up losing my job because I lost the ability to pronounce my words, which I hope doesn't happen again, because it'd make it very difficult to do this. And my home, I owned a home, I was twenty-two, I owned a beautiful home, and because my relationship broke down, I was bullied out of having what I was rightfully entitled to. And sadly, my story is not unique, so I ask that particular focus is made on prevention. Looking back at my own situation, there was a number of occasions that things could have stopped, and things could have been, you know, there could have been intervention, and I never would have ended up spending that first night in my car. I wholeheartedly support this strategy, and I think by working together, we have a real opportunity to make an impact for those who find himself homeless across the county and the neighbouring counties. The challenge ahead is difficult, and there are many factors that contribute towards homelessness, and these need to be looked at. Thank you.
Well, well done, Lisa. Anybody else wish to comment? Sarah Jones?
Yeah, providing no one else wants to speak, it was just to pick up on a few of those points, just in terms of councillor Patrion, you know, talking about not going to break the back of this alone, absolutely, that's the whole purpose of working across five local authorities to try and address this issue collaboratively. And in terms of some of the specific actions, I actually think they're really clear in here, and it's a great, you've got all the context, and then if you get to page one hundred and seventy-eight, perhaps you didn't get that far, councillor Patrion, there's a very clear action plan which, which details all of that. But welcome some of the supportive comments that you've said. Councillor Easton, really important points, particularly around the fact that this is, this is boundaryless, if you like, this issue, you know, that's why, again, we need to be working collaboratively across those local authorities. And finally, councillor Dimmock, talked a lot about admiration today, again, huge amount of admiration for you, and also very much listening mode, because all of your experiences are absolutely critical as part of this. And I think all along, if you read this report, prevention is absolutely key, and it's much more multifaceted than just looking at it as a, as a housing issue alone. All those contributory factors, relationship breakdowns, domestic abuse, mental health, they're all things that we can address through our social justice approach as well as through this strategy. So I think, you know, we've got a really good stepping stone here, huge societal challenges and problems, but I know as a council, we're absolutely committed to addressing it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on page forty-one, the recommendation is to accept and adopt the draft Gwent homelessness strategy. Will you all please show your support? It's been a good afternoon, isn't it?
In the Conservative manifesto in twenty seventeen, and in this local authority's corporate plan, we've been very clear and consistent about our commitment to renew all four secondary schools in Monmashia. Now, Caldercot is complete, Monmouth is open to students, as the external landscaping and demolition of the old school is well underway. For any members who've visited either Caldercot or Monmouth, and I know a number of members joined us on tours over the summer, you can't fail to be impressed by the facilities on offer to students in those two schools. These, these schools offer mature, modern and energy-efficient learning environments packed with state-of-the-art technology. These schools are future-proofed and are ready for the new curriculum, giving teachers much greater flexibility in using new teaching methods. But we want every child in Monmashia to be able to learn in such a modern school environment, giving them the very best opportunity to recognise and achieve their full potential. Last year, we set out ambitious proposals to complete our secondary school renewal with new schools for Abegavenny and Chepstow in bands B and C of the Twenty-First Century Schools Programme. In Abegavenny, we proposed an all-through school on the site of King Henry VIII, with students from both King Henry and Derry View Primary Schools. This would allow Ascollavenny to move to expand to two-form entry and to grow to a four-hundred and twenty intake on the vacated Derry View site. This move recognises the growth in demand for Welsh medium education in the Abegavenny area. We've also proposed a Welsh medium stream on the King Henry site for students in key stages three and four. These are commitments contained within our recently approved Welsh in Education strategic plan. We believe that the development of an all-through school in Abegavenny offers a number of exciting opportunities, including ending the sometimes difficult transition between primary and secondary school. Last month, we had confirmation from the Welsh Government that the ratio of financial assistance will change from what was originally planned for band B. The new ratio of sixty-five, thirty-five, so that's sixty-five per cent from Welsh Government, thirty-five per cent from the local authority, while it falls short of the seventy-thirty ratio that the Welsh Local Government Association called for, is particularly welcome, and it's going to make the redevelopment of Abegavenny more affordable. So today, I'm asking members to approve capital expenditure to set up the project team to begin developing the full business case for an all-through school in Abegavenny, and also to begin the preparatory work on the redevelopment of Chepstow, scheduled for band C, for which Welsh Government funding is due to open in twenty twenty-four. Now, full detailed costings are set out in the report, but the team will also, the team will include existing local authority officers, because we're keen to make best use of the experience and the expertise of those who worked so hard on the redevelopment of Caldercot and Monmouth. Our Twenty-First Century Schools Board will be meeting early in the new year to take this project forward. We're very early still in the journey to develop a new school in Abegavenny, and we have considerable consultation to undertake with students, teachers and the wider Abegavenny community, because we want the school to be involved, we want the new school in Abegavenny to be bespoke. I look forward to that engagement and would welcome the support of members today to get the ball rolling on this next chapter in fulfilling our commitment of giving every child in Monmashia the chance to achieve their full potential.
Thank you, Richard. councillor Watts.
Yes, Chair, I've just got a question about the preparatory work that was, is going to be carried out for Chepstow School. As we know, it's been a very difficult pill to swallow for Chepstow members, regardless of a political party, about the, obviously, the pushback, really, the, the kicking into the long grass, really, of the development of the Twenty-First Century School in Chepstow. It, it, it's heartbreaking, really, but we've, we've had to effectively learn to live with it, because you're in charge. What, what I'm looking for, and there's a lot of kind of rumour, I appreciate and gossip about the proposals, is a firm commitment that, that the comprehensive school will stay as a comprehensive school in its existing form. I know it's got issues competing with Wydean, I know about the three hundred and seventeen children last year that were exodus in over the, over the, over the river, but we, we need to make a clear statement of intent about the education for Chepstow School, otherwise there will be a, a, a reduction in the reputational value of that school. And I'm asking, I'm pleading with him to make an immediate commitment to Chepstow School.
councillor John.
Thank you. I can give you a very clear commitment to the future of Chepstow School. We've been very clear that this is a for-school renewal project. We're halfway, we've got Caldercot and Monmouth open to students, but we've got two secondary schools still to, still to redevelop. As I said at the start, I want every child to have the chance to study in a school like Caldercot or, or Monmouth. But there is a way to go. We appreciate that the, the two schools, Monmouth and Caldercot, have been very expensive. There are ways of building schools more cheaply, but you pay your money and you, you make, you make your choice. In those two schools, we have got phenomenal facilities for young people in, in those communities, and we want children in Abegavenny and Chepstow to have the same. So I don't want to reopen the debate we had last year about Abegavenny or Chepstow, because I appreciate that members for Abegavenny and members for Chepstow may have different views about which school should have been third and which one should have been fourth. But we've been very clear, we want to renew all four schools, clearly they need to be done in an order. We had a very robust process in terms of deciding which order that should be. We, we looked at, and I, I know we looked in detail at evidence of the, the independent building surveys that were done on both King Henry and on Chepstow, and the evidence was very clear that Abegavenny was in a more aged state, and renewal of that, of those buildings was more urgent than, than Chepstow. So no project is being kicked into the long grass. We're still committed to doing all four. In terms of the losses to, to Wydean, we do lose more students out of county to Wydean than we would like. We're working closely with the school to raise standards, we're working closely with the school to improve standards of leadership at the school, and we've, we've recently made, made an appointment on, on long-term leadership at, at that school. But we are investing in Chepstow School, that's why this time last year, we announced an investment of two hundred thousand pounds in IT, matching some of the investment that's been made in new technology in both Caldercot and Monmouth. We didn't want students in Chepstow or Abegavenny to feel that they were losing out because their school hasn't been renewed yet. It's still in the pipeline, but that's why we made that investment of two hundred thousand pounds in this financial year, which, as I reported to full council a couple of months ago, exactly a detailed breakdown of what that, that two hundred thousand pounds has been spent on. But we're committed to renewing all four secondary schools, and today is another staging post on that journey.
councillor Patrion.
Thank you. I think, I don't want to speak for councillor Watts, he can speak for himself, but he's not saying not build Abegavenny first, we want Abegavenny and Chepstow at the same time.
He's not a rest in the office.
Exactly. So it's not, we, we want exactly the same what you did for Monmouth and Caldercot at the same time. So we want both Abegavenny and Chepstow built in band B funding. And I remember at the, at the cabinet, several cabinet meetings and in the paperwork, it was basically, we couldn't, the rationale is we couldn't do this because it was so expensive to do it all in band B funding, so one school had to be picked and prioritised. But in late November, last month, the Welsh Government changed the capital funding arrangements, where the Welsh Government would cover sixty-five per cent of the capital, previously it was fifty per cent, and it would increase its share if there was, if there was an additional learning needs unit and pupil referral unit to seventy-five per cent, where the local authority would pick up twenty-five per cent. And in addition to that, it raised an extra hundred, five hundred million pounds in capital funding for MI mutual investment model if we decided to go that route, all of which is new changes to the capital funding model, which surely changes the calculation for which we judge the basis of why Abegavenny only would go into band B and Chepstow would go into band C. Surely with these changes by the Welsh Government, improving their offer essentially to local authorities, covering more of the cost, surely now we can revisit that and say Chepstow deserves to be in band B, because it does, given its competition with Wydean, as councillor Watts pointed out, that we need to make that school a Twenty-First Century School so it can compete and give the Chepstow residents and their pupils a top quality education they need as quick as possible.
I appreciate the subject you're all on, but that is not what is before us. It's the establishment of a panel. Yeah, but it's a sort of what goes next. I don't want to get into the debate that is starting now. councillor Fox.
Right, I don't know if I'd be able to say what I'm going to say then. No, I'm just absolutely going to support Richard, I think he made it very clear, the commitment to our for-school strategy. I'm quite astounded that our opposition haven't got a grasp on the financial pressures that this organisation is facing and the, the capital constraints we're under. I mean, there's been so much talk about that, so I, I know, Dimitri, you have to say what you have to say, but the reality is, you know, there isn't, we couldn't possibly do the two schools, even if they were ready right now, to, to, we couldn't do the two together. There is a whole big story around, and rationale- There is a whole big story around, and rationale around where we are, where we are, and I'm not going to revisit those. I just want to absolutely support Richard and will and all of the team to push ahead with this next stage, which is obviously the King Henry, and that further work on preparing for Chepstow in the future. We've adhered to our commitment to education within this chamber for best part of 20 years, and we're not moving away from that now. We've delivered and delivered and delivered, there's never a point where we haven't delivered on what we've said, and we will deliver on what we've said this time as well.
Councillor Crook, but please bear in mind what the subject is that is before us.
Yeah, I'd like to refer specifically to paragraph 3.8, Chair, thank you. This is the paragraph that talks about the opportunities that the building of the new school will provide for wider leisure facilities, and the report talks about extending the scope to the authority for a strategic master plan. This is in my ward, and so I have that interest in wanting the very best for not only my ward, but of course Abergavenie and Monmouthshire. The point I'd like to make is that the world is now more complex than it used to be, and so we would, as a local authority, be dealing on that site with the governing body of the new school. We would be working, if things go according to current plans, with the Board of Monlife about redevelopment of a leisure centre on that side. And the third element on that side is the football stadium. The report actually calls it the Abergavenie Thursdays Pitch. It's actually a stadium in which Abergavenie Town are currently playing. They have a football team which is currently second in their league and hosts the women's team which is in the Welsh Premier Division. So it's rather more than a football pitch. I am concerned that the grandiose idea that there is land there and it can just be developed is oversimpl. I hope it can come to pass, because there is the land there for a fantastic facility, but it will be very easy to slip through the cracks. I would imagine there will be a very close relationship between the governing body and the school and this authority, and one would hope that the same will be true of the Board of Monlife and this authority. And certainly with the football club, the county council is actually the landlord of the site. I would hope that, looking forward, planning would not involve reclaiming the tenancy for itself, because it was fantastic that only a couple of weeks ago, the Cabinet agreed to give section 106 funding to enable the uplifting of that ground, to enable the team to continue playing at its current level in the Welsh soccer pyramid. I hope that as we move forward, the vision can be translated into reality, and I think it's imperative that the board, however it's created as a result of our decisions today, bears in mind that it will have to work with these other partners in what could be a very exciting scheme for Abergavenie.
Thank you very much. Councillor Harris?
Thank you, Chair. Just to declare an interest, I'm a governor of Derryview School, it's non-prejudicial.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tudor Thomas?
I've got to declare an interest, I'm a governor of Ascollgymraigavenny in Abergavenie. A question really to the cabinet member, councillor Richard John, how firm is the commitment to a two-form Welsh entry stream in the new development? Personally, I'm unhappy with it, but that's besides the point. Talking to parents in Ascollgymraigavenny, they would not be happy for their children to move forward into a Welsh stream, where only 80% of their curriculum would be in Welsh. The ethos and the language of the school would obviously be in English, and certainly Richard John and I visited Ascollgov in Gwynlwyw, which was the school where Welsh medium secondary pupils go, and we spoke from year seven to year 13, and all of them said they would not feel comfortable speaking Welsh out on the playground or interacting in Welsh as they did in Gwynlwyw if they were in a Welsh stream in an English school. And in reality, personally, I think it's a backward step in terms of Welsh medium provision. Ascollgymraigavenny is going to continue to grow, we're going to have a new school in Monmouth, you've also got Ascollafin down near Caldecott, although everybody wants to call it Ascollafin, which I can't quite understand, but, you know, there is going to be need in the future for Welsh medium secondary provision, and not a stream, an actual school, so I'm a bit concerned about that.
Okay, Richard, you want to warm up?
Yeah, thank you. So you're absolutely right, we did undertake that visit, and thank you very much for organising that. It was extremely informative to Gwynlwyw, we had a constructive chat with a number of students across the year groups. So the Welsh medium stream is a key part of not just our band B proposals, but also our Welsh in Education strategic plan, which I know that element has been specifically welcomed by the Welsh Government. But we've got a detailed consultation to go through now in the development of that business case. So we need to listen to students, to the wider community, but I also want to engage with Welsh medium campaigners as well, and I know through our Welsh medium forum, of which you're a member, that there has been some significant opposition voiced from Welsh medium campaigners to the proposal of a stream, and I think in the consultation, we will have to listen to those voices very, very carefully. Nothing is written in stone, so I'm prepared to go into that consultation with an open mind. It's something, of course, our 21st Century Schools Board, of which councillor Harris is a member, will consider in depth as well. So nothing is set in stone, let's see what comes out in the consultation. But our commitment to offering parents in Monmouthshire a choice about where their children is educated, either through the medium of English or Welsh, is very clear, and this proposal is a part of that commitment.
That brings us to the end of the report, because I terminated it on the proposal. Okay, we have recommendations, no, he doesn't want to speak, recommendations on page 259 and 260 for this approval, can you all show, please? Is anybody against? Nope? Okay, thank you very much. We go on now to item nine, which is the confirmation of the county council meeting here, held on the 25th of October, on page 269. Move.
Sorry, Chair, I believe there's correction needed on declarations of interest. You've got county councillor Roger Hoggins.
Anybody else wish to bring up anything on those minutes? No, they all? Please show your hands for approval. Okay. And then we go on to item 10A, which is the minutes of the audit committee. Jim, do you wish to move these?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. They are as presented, they have yet to be authenticated, because there's supposed to be an audit committee today, and that's been put off until next year. So I ask members just to recognise that particular fact, but they are there, and it's a true statement of everything that happened, as far as I'm concerned.
Councillor Betruni?
You seem to have skipped item nine, action list.
Oh, sorry, pardon.
Council actions.
Sorry about that. Sorry? Yep, yep.
On the action list, when we passed the motion around the housing company, it was a commitment to come back to council with a proposal, the previous council, which didn't arise, and there's no proposal in this council either, and it's not even in the homeless strategy, could it at least be in the action list, which it's not, to at least keep us abreast of when it will ever come to us?
Can the council accept them as read, please? Move.
I feel like I'm going to go into Christmas with a whole bag full of jumies sitting next to you, nothing to add to watch there already.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just a little bit nonplussed about the first paragraph in section four there, about the turnout of members, and it's just the wording, there's a fairly low turnout, which maybe reflects the complexity of the gender and the level of process documents going before them. That was a reference to the Select Committee, and I just thought that almost paints a picture as if we're a little bit too thick to consider anything difficult, and that's why we didn't turn up. I mean, in my case, I turned about two o'clock, because that's when I thought the meeting was, so I didn't give my apologies, but one of the reasons I can't attend those meetings very often is because it's at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's a bad time. But I just think that wording in the minute is a little bit unfortunate.
So, thank you, Chairman, just a second now, and the reason why I struggle is it's in the middle of the day and it makes it very, very difficult to attack it.
I'm sure our chief executive will take that on board.
I actually think it probably would have been fair, as I say, because some of the content so far has been a bit boring. You know, the reality of the PSB is in the new year it moves into delivery mode, and, you know, whilst scrutiny at all levels is important, scrutiny of process is not really probably where you want to spend your time, so I think the comment councillor Howard is fair and will reflect it.
That brings us to the end of the last meeting of 2018. It remains for me to wish you all a very happy and healthy Christmas, despite Malakoff, and you are all welcome in my office now for festive drinks, if my wife's arrived with them, and mince pies, and speed you on your way. Thank you.